Good evening, everybody, and welcome. This is our November 27th regular meeting of the Mason County Commission, our evening meeting. Tom Davis, would you do us the honor of leading us to the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I do, thank you. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schudie.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Terry Drexler.
Here.
Item number four, correspondence and organizational business. Do we have correspondence to come before this body?
Yes. Fire Districts Five, Six, Eleven, Thirteen, along with Port of Hootsport and Port of Great View, sent in their 2019 budgets. Bo Bocken sent in an application for the Housing and Behavioral Health Board, and B. Dean Byrd sent in an application for the Mason County Civil Service Commission.
Thank you. Item number 4.2, news release, Civil Service, Frank Pitter.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a news release regarding the Mason County, excuse me, Civil Service Commission vacancy. The Board of Mason County Commissioners is seeking application to fill a position on the Mason County Civil Service Commission. This is for a six-year term that will end on December 31st, 2024. To qualify, the individual must be a United States citizen, a resident of Mason County for at least the past two years, and an elector in Mason County. This person cannot be employed by Mason County and shall serve without compensation. At the time of appointment, no more than two Commissioners shall be adherent of the same political party. The general purpose of the Civil Service Commission is to establish a merit system of employment for the county deputy sheriffs and other employees of the office of the county sheriff. The Mason County Civil Service Commission meets on the third Thursday of each month at 5:00 PM in Mason County Building One at 411 North Fifth Street in Shelton. Interested parties may obtain an application at the Mason County Commissioner's Office at 411 North Fifth Street in Shelton, or call (360) 427-9670, extension 419, or visit the Mason County website at www.co.mason.wa.us. Applications will be accepted until Friday, December 14th, 2018.
Thank you. Is there any other correspondence or organizational business come before this body?
No.
We'll move to item number five, which is your open forum for citizens' input. This is your opportunity to speak to the commission about any item that is not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, we ask that you wait, and you'll be given an opportunity to speak at that time. But if you'd like, you can give up the five minutes per person, 15 minutes total time limit for everybody, so please be brief. I'll recognize you. Please come up and tell us your name and perhaps where you're from.
Yeah, Patrick Burke, I'm from Golden Peasant Road. I have some comments on the purchase of the Olson building, cannot be spoken about at this time.
Yes. We don't have anything in our sense that I saw.
Okay, fine. First, this is about a five-minute presentation, so. This is a little short history here on concrete block buildings. During a post-World War II era, and all the way into the late '60s and early '70s, concrete block construction was a way to get more square footage for the dollar. This was a time of rapid economic growth in our country. They were the post-buildings of their day. Erected steel and concrete tilt-up construction has made concrete block buildings mostly obsolete. Their lifespan, like the pole building, lifespan of a concrete block structure is limited, depending on the quality of the concrete components, block, mortar, and foundation. Lifespan can be as little as 25 to 30 years. Cement block buildings do not fare well in the Pacific Northwest. Our humidity prematurely causes the blocks and mortar to leach their lime and disintegrate. Climate conditions will deteriorate any steel rebar that may be in the block spaces. Unlike their modern cousin, the concrete tilt-up building, block buildings are full of voids and air spaces, allowing permeation of moisture, causing a shorter service life. As a concrete tilt-up building reaches its maximum concrete hardness in about its 25th year, in that same period of time, the block building is in decay of one stage or another. As sometimes referred to as cinder blocks, for years, ash and cinders were mixed in the concrete as a filler. Today, this includes incinerated chemical waste. Now, the Olson building. Just a brief walk-around, this building shows obvious signs of deterioration I've just described to you. The structure exhibits vertical cracking that runs from the roof to the floors. These cracks run directly through the blocks, not just around the mortar lines. I have some photographs of that building. They'll take place Monday for your viewing pleasure. It's very obvious that this structure needs to be subject of an inspection by a licensed structural seismic, I want to repeat seismic engineer, and a report issued on its actual condition. Until such an inspection is conducted, no further talk of purchase should be even considered. This period of time would give county staff a chance to get some realistic cost estimates on any future renovation of this building. A further concern is the building's location in Shelton. It sits on the back-filled portion of town, and you may remember San Francisco in 1988 in its back-filled Marina District. A major quake will cause a phenomenon called liquefaction. It's my belief that the whole downtown area with its non-reinforced masonry structures will be an unbelievable tragedy, a lot of it depending on the time of day it happens and if it's the long-anticipated big one. It is obvious at a glance that the glazing in this building is not the code. There's talk that there's an issue with the roofing, and the high-vac system will surely require expensive modification to heat and cool room enclosures, perhaps even a complete replacement, electrical and plumbing are a whole separate issue. It's my belief that this building is not now or probably ever suitable to be a publicly county-owned building. Now, as two of our current Commissioners are former real estate professionals, I'm puzzled as to why they did not tie this property up with an option to purchase for 90 days or so, and then research the costs involved, and then present a sensible plan to the public about the anticipated costs with a plan to pay for all of it. As this commission has a fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers, I expect this process to be done by the numbers and all the bases to be covered. Webster's Collegiate Dictionary defines the word malfeasance as to cause harm or injury. The harm will definitely be to the taxpayers. The injury could come in the form of the big one at 10:00 AM on a busy workday. Now, a note here, as to my comments on concrete block construction, as a young guy, I worked on a concrete block construction crew, so I know a little bit about what I'm talking about here. In addition, a far better move would have been to repurpose the old PUD building as a Commissioners and Staff Center with its auditorium and parking availability. It would have been a logical choice. It would leave the first floor of this building available for conversion to courtrooms, as I believe it was probably intended to be from the beginning. Now, in closing, and I'd like our member of the journal here to take note of this. Until Mason County can find a reliable revenue stream that does not cause further hardship on its property owners, a revenue stream that is uniquely our own, that we don't have to share with the state, we will continue to have this dilemma of funding our public safety issues, a new jail being the most pressing at this time. I strongly urge you to make the right decision here to those who've entrusted you. Please get it right, or just don't do it at all. Thank you.
Mr. Burke, just so you know, is it possible to get him a copy, even though it hasn't official of the inspection?
Sure, I can forward it to him.
We will provide you with a copy. We did have it inspected.
Yeah, we inspect them.
Well, you'll see all that.
Was it done by a structural engineer with a seismic degree?
Again, we will get that to you, and whether it meets your standards or not, it meets the standards that is required by the state and by us as a licensed inspector for commercial. But with that also, I want to point out that we'll get you a copy of that. We do have a contingency that helps to protect this, to make sure that everything goes through. Everything is contingent until the final vote from this commission, too, by the way. So if that's an issue you have, we took care of that in doing the paperwork. And I wanted to inform you that we did look at the PUD building originally quite a while back. We did the same thing. We sent people over. We had a look at it, and the costs for bringing that back, this was way higher than we could afford to do. So I'm just letting you know that we did a lot of the stuff that you're saying, we actually have done that.
Well, you're looking at purchasing a building that's probably about 60 years old that's disintegrated.
Okay, thank you.
Also, I make a correction. I am not a real estate professional.
Oh, I thought you were. Okay, well, my apologies.
I wasn't going to make that for you. Come, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Tom Davis, resident District Two in Mason County. I'd like to talk on the same topic as you might expect. There's a couple of things I think should be considered. As you know, I make no secret that I think this is a terrible idea for the variety of reasons that I brought forth. But in addition to those, it's no secret also that the Olson business was in trouble for a number of years. And when you're in financial trouble, you don't normally keep up the maintenance of things that you normally would when you're hard-pressed for cash. So in some degree, I see this as buying somebody else's troubles. I, too, looked at the building. I have some experience in real estate, and I certainly wondered whether or not anybody on this commission would purchase that building if you had a use for it for that price if it wasn't with public money, simply because I would never have done that, and I assume because you, I know, are a real estate professional. And I just didn't see you in that position doing that, especially knowing that there's going to be subsequent costs that are going to be extensive, and where those monies are going to come from, because REIT is not a bottomless pit of money. And every time I hear REIT, I just wonder, wow, how much is in this fund? Because if it's going to be used for various long-term obligations or debt and so on, and every time I see something about a sewer system, it always seems to be the money's coming out from REIT. So I don't think it's entirely forthcoming to say that all this money's coming out of REIT. I would suspect that no matter what you do, the current expense fund is going to be impacted, whether it's this or any other project of this magnitude that you get yourself involved in. It's always going to impact current expense. There are always hidden costs. There are always more than you anticipate. If you ever built a house, you know it takes twice as long, costs twice as much money. Those are just the facts of life. I wonder why you would do this, because I have maybe more faith than you think in your judgment at this, when it comes to real estate transactions. The other thing I'd like to bring up is that nobody I know, nobody I know is for this. Maybe we run in different circles, but I talked to the city. Everyone I talked to says this is a bad idea. Now, be that as it may, I was lectured the other day that you represent, you are elected to represent the people, but I'm at a loss to know who you're representing in this deal. Who is it that you're representing? You know, there's a lot of people who are against it. I haven't met anybody who's for it. I haven't heard anybody speak for it. I don't know if you're getting letters that says, yeah, this is a great idea, let's do this. But I have to question who you're doing this for. And bear in mind, it's not my intention to lecture, but it is my intention to review something that I think is worthy of another revisit, and that's the RCW 42.56.030.
Whoa, 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 42.56.030.
Which I would pay for a plaque and put it up on that wall if you would like to take me up on that. And it says, "The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies that serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may maintain control over the instruments that they have created. This chapter shall be liberally construed and its exemptions narrowly construed to promote this public policy and to assure that the public interest will be fully protected. In the event of a conflict between the provisions of this chapter and any other act, the provisions of this chapter shall govern." Now, that's something I've heard a couple, I think I might have, years ago, before you folks came, that bench I might have brought up when I discovered, and I have this framed in my house, and I'm naive enough to think that it still applies in all decision-making policy decisions. That did not take place at this time for this particular proposal. None of this really took place in an open, forthcoming atmosphere where people could participate before it got this far down along the line. So at this point, I would probably start repeating myself, so I just want to add that, that I still don't think it's a good idea. I think it's going to hang around your neck at some point, and I think it's going to be a money pit that will never, ever be filled up to anyone's satisfaction.
Just want to clarify, the one you mentioned is the Public Records Act, right?
It's not, it comes under construction.
Yeah, but under the Public Records Act.
Yeah, on Title 42.
Yeah, which is, you know, has a purpose under the Public Records Act. It's literally listed under the Public Records Act. 4.56 is Public Records Act, and this is a subset of it. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same place.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would there be a difference in what it means?
Yeah, we have 36, which, all of the RCWs, which apply strictly to the county and the county government. You have 56, which applies to the port governments. You have, but I just wanted to verify that we're on the same one, that you're taking a subsection out of one particular thing out of the Public Records.
Correct, that applies to, okay, I think we're on the same page.
Okay, with that, is there anybody else who would like to testify on any issue that's not on the agenda? Hearing none, we will move forward. We have the adoption of the agenda, please.
Mr. Chair, I move adoption of tonight's agenda as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded for the adoption of the agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The motion carries. We have no minutes. So next up is approval of the action agenda. All items listed under the action agenda may be enacted by one motion unless a commissioner or citizen requests the item be removed from the action agenda and considered as a separate item. We will take the time and read each of the items to the public, after which you'll be given an opportunity to ask a question that would help you to decide whether to have it taken off for a separate vote. But if you'd like to testify, please, just have it taken off for a separate vote, and we'll give you your opportunity at the right time. With that being said, I will read item number 8.1 through 8.5. Commissioner Drexler, if you would read 8.6 through 8.10, and Chris Schudie, 8.11 through Item number 8.1, approval to set a public hearing on December 11th, 2018, at 9:30 AM to consider the updated fee schedule for community development and amendments to ordinances 42-18 and 123-08. Item number 8.2, approval to appoint or reappoint two new members to the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission to fill two open seats with three-year terms ending November 2021. There was a correction on what's written on the paper. It is on the paper as 20, but it's 2021. Item number 8.3, approval to set a public hearing on December 18th, 2018, at 9:30 AM to consider adopting the public benefit rating system. Item number 8.4, approval of warrants and treasures, electronic remittances, direct deposit fund warrants number 54645 through 55018, sum of $682,663.21. Salaries clearing fund warrants number 7004050 through 7004078 for a sum of $478,355.78. Item number 8.5, approval to consolidate juvenile departments into one department and to approve to delete funds 138 and 406 in the 2019 budget.
Item 8.6, approval to authorize the Deputy Director of Utilities and Waste Management to sign the contract with Instapipe Incorporated for completing the Russellwood Sewer Main Lining Project in the amount of $229,878, which includes sales tax. 8.7, approval of the private line occupancy permit, granting permission to run a power water and septic transport line under and across North Shore Road for parcel number 8.8, approval to authorize ERNR to dispose of certain equipment and vehicles as surplus and allow ERNR to dispose of pursuant to Mason County Code and state laws. 8.9, approval to execute the resolution authorizing Public Works Utility and Waste Management Division to contract with correct equipment for maintenance services to the sewer grinder pumps for the North Base Sewer System and Belfair Sewer System as sole source. 8.10, approval to authorize Public Works to advertise set bid opening date, time, award contract, and allow the chair to sign all pertinent documents for call for bids to furnish Mason County with asphalt emotion for 2019. Contract awards will be announced during a regular meeting of the board.
Mr. Chair, item 8.11, approval to authorize Public Works to advertise said bid opening date and time, award contract, and allow the chair to sign all pertinent documents for routine paint lines for 2019. The contract award will be announced during a regular meeting of the board. Item 8.12, approval to authorize Public Works to advertise set bid opening date and time award contract and allow the chair to sign all pertinent documents for the 2019 manufacturing and stockpiling of chip seal aggregate. Contract awards will be announced during a regular meeting of the board. Item 8.13, approval to authorize Public Works to advertise set bid opening date and time award contract and allow the chair to sign all pertinent documents for call for bids to furnish Mason County with asphaltic materials. Contract awards will be announced at a scheduled meeting of the board. Item 8.14, approval to authorize Public Works to advertise set bid opening date and time award contract and allow the chair to sign all pertinent documents for call for bids to furnish Mason County with culvert, pipe, and linings. Contract awards will be announced during a regular meeting of the board. Item 8.15, approval to authorize Public Works to use written and/or telephone solicitations to establish a 2019 servicing materials unit pricing vendor list. And item 8.16, approval to authorize Public Works ERNR to use written and/or telephone solicitations for tire repair and towing services for the 2019 calendar year and sign and award contracts. Mason County does not guarantee a minimum purchase of these services.
Now that the items have been read to you in the public, this will be your opportunity to ask any questions that may help you to decide whether or not to take it off for a separate vote. Does anybody have any questions? Hearing none, are there any items that you'd like taken off for a separate vote? Hearing none, Commissioners, are there any items you'd like taken off for a separate vote?
No.
Then I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of all items 8.1 through 8.16 on today's action agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the approval of the action agenda in its entirety. Item number 8.1, all the way through 8.16. Any further comments?
No.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The motion carries. We are a little bit, is there any other business or department heads or elected officials who would like to speak? No? Okay, then we'll move on to item number 10, which we cannot do at this time. We've got five minutes, so if there's no objection, we'll move to board reports and calendars. Commissioner Drexler, would you mind leading us off? Commissioner Schudie, then myself.
Okay. Last week was a short week, so we had our board, our regular board meeting, met with the Port of Shelton, and introduced a topic to them for consideration. Had our Mason Transit Authority Board meeting. And then Thanksgiving holiday, we had our briefings yesterday. This afternoon, we had our Board of Health. Tomorrow, I'll be going to the North Mason Chamber of Commerce luncheon. Thursday, we'll be meeting with the Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Council Board Meeting. There'll be a presentation by the newly-appointed Employment Security Department Director. I'll be attending the meet and greet for all the candidates for the City of Shelton manager job, and then we'll have a Council of Governance meeting with the Pacific Mountain Consortium, Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Consortium. And then I will also be participating in the Belfair Parade on Sunday, so I'm sure I'll see you there. Back for briefings on Monday, and Monday is also our, Monday the 3rd is our budget hearing for the 2019 budget.
Just want to say, Commissioner, you ran them all out.
Man, I wish I hadn't.
Just a quick item from last week. Productive meeting with Loretta Swanson for Public Works at Evan Bowder from the Mason Conservation District. Some exciting funding coming down from the federal government in the Skokomish Valley to fund the Army Corps of Engineer work out there, and it's never more timely than during a late-fall rainstorm to hear that we have been funded at $13.6 million from the Army Corps of Engineer to get work started there over the next couple of years. And so our folks at Public Works and at the Conservation District are going to be working hard with the legislators, with our legislators this year to ensure that we have all the appropriate local fund matching dollars that are needed to get that project moving. That's, I know, will be welcome news for residents out in the valley. Going forward this week, tomorrow, I have a meeting with our Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board. Then I have mobile office hours at Hootsport on Thursday at 10:30 at the Timberland Library there. And then a regular meeting of the State Building Code Council in Olympia. We do have our budget hearing on Monday morning at 9:00. And then prior to our meeting on Tuesday, I'll be attending the Hood Canal School District, State of the District meeting, and looking forward to hearing about all the wonderful work that the staff is doing out there with their students at Hood Canal, and then back for our Tuesday morning meeting.
Okay. First of all, thank you for mentioning the parade. It wasn't on my calendar, and I'm even supposed to read a poem there, so.
Hope you're there.
Thank you for putting that in. Mason Transit Authority meeting, met with the Boy Scouts, and I let them know that you'd be interested in helping them next year. It actually turned out to be really wonderful. They took me into a back room and grilled the heck out of me as a group. It was pretty interesting, and, boy, they have some ideas and some views of how that the whole government thing should work. I liked it, actually. North Mason Chamber Board of Directors meeting, we had our briefings, canvassing board. Then I met with some builder-developer from the North Mason region about some of the things going on there. Another canvassing board meeting, then we had Board of Health. That brings me to Memorial Hall meeting in the morning, North Mason Chamber Board meeting. I'll be gone for a while, doing some stuff at the RIS pool. We have our briefings, we have a budget hearing, I have the left board, and parade. So with that being said, we are so super close to getting this thing done.
Could you give us a little preview of the poem?
Yeah, I didn't bring it with me. Basically, it's the night before Christmas, and somebody chose a bunch of different words, and it's harder to read than it looks like, because if it doesn't roll, that's how it works. So they're taking the poem from several, probably 100-plus years old, and updated it. It'll be interesting. I'm sure it will not roll off the tongue, and it will not go smooth, but we will do our best. With that being said, let me make sure.
Since we have a minute or two, I'd like to bring up, we heard testimony about the longevity of a cinder block building, and I wondered what the commission thought about ordering a structural engineer seismic inspection of the building.
It doesn't bother me, but I do know when they do an inspection, they look at every aspect of it.
Do you think the one we had?
Yeah, it's professionally done. I would expect their reputation and their money, because if they did it really poorly, they are responsible for that. So if it hadn't been a commercial one, then I would question it myself, if it was just a residential.
Yeah, I would agree with that. You know, I'd stop my, be able to come back to us on Monday with some thoughts on that, but I think there was a thorough commercial inspection.
And the funny thing about some of these guys, they have different qualifications. I did notice he had past inspection qualifications. I didn't look for the other, so it may already be there. We'll find out. I'll look as soon as I'm done. I was intent to see that myself, but I can go either way. All right, we are there, so I don't get to sign yet.
Sign that back.
No, that's good. Bought us the rest of the time. All right, next up, we're going to open the hearing. This is a public hearing to take public comment on the certification to the county assessor, the amount of taxes levied for county purposes, and to the amount of taxes levied for each taxing district for 2019. An increase to the current expense and road property tax levies for 2019 may be considered. Staff, Jennifer Byerly.
Thank you, Commissioners. Jennifer Byerly, Mason County Support Services. And this is a public hearing to certify to the county assessor the amount of taxes levied for county purposes and the amount of taxes levied for current expense and road for 2019. An increase to the current expense and road property tax levies for 2019 may be considered, as you stated. My recommended action is, on item number one, the current expense levy, move to adopt the resolutions in increasing the 2019 current expense property tax levy by 1%, set the levy at $10,207,397.50 and bank excess capacity. On item number two, the road levy, I recommend the board move to adopt the resolutions increasing the 2019 road property tax levy by 1%, bank excess capacity, and set the levy at $10,947,189.90. $10,947,189.97, and this includes a diversion of the road levy of $2,160,000. On item number three, resolution certifying levies to the assessor, I would recommend that the commission move to continue the hearing to the December 18th, 2018 commission meeting at 9:30 a.m. to adopt the resolution certifying to the county assessor the property tax levies for collection in 2019, as not all districts have submitted their levy information to the assessor at this time. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair, I do want a brief question. If you don't have the information in front of you now, that's fine, you can get back to me. What is the bank capacity of the current expense and road?
I don't believe that there's any bank capacity at this time, but I can verify that and, and let you know for certain on December 18th.
There is.
Oh, there is.
Yes, there's no, none, none in, in general, but we have it in roads.
There may be some in roads.
Yeah, well, it was, because we presented it, so it was 8.8 percent.
I can, I can verify.
Yeah, that's fine. What if, yeah, when you get.
I'll get to that and, and let you know on, on December 18th.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Hearing none, we will close that, and welcome for public testimony. Is there anybody who would like to publicly testify? Hearing none, we'll close that, move into commission deliberations. Is there anybody that wants to deliberate?
Mr. Chair, I, I move to increase the 2019 current expense property tax levy by 1 percent, set the levy at $10,207,397.50 and bank excess capacity.
And I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to increase the levy, the current expense levy by 1 percent and bank excess capacity, move to adopt the resolutions increasing the 2019 current expense property tax levy by 1 percent, set the levy at $10,207,397.50 and bank excess capacity. Any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the resolutions increasing the 2019 road property tax levy by 1 percent, bank excess capacity, and set the levy at $10,947,189.97. This includes a diversion of the road levy of $2,160,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution increasing the 2019 road property tax levy by 1 percent, bank excess capacity, and set the levy at $10,947,189.97. This includes a diversion of the road levy of $2,160,000. Any further discussion? Hearing?
I just wanted to just note for the public, note, note that there's about a $750,000 difference, $740,000 difference between what the road levy takes in versus the current expense levy, and it was noted in our citizen advisory board, budget advisory board meetings, that we are one of the few counties in the state that have a higher road levy than a current expense levy. And the way the world has, has moved into criminal justice costs and those sorts of things, that it's an unfortunate situation that we don't have, you know, that we're not flip-flopped on that one.
Any other comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Next up.
Mr. Chair, I move to continue the hearing to December 18th, 2018, meeting at 9:30 a.m. to adopt the resolution certifying to the county assessor the property tax levies for collection in 2019.
And I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue the hearing to December 18th, 2018, commission meeting at 9:30 a.m. to adopt the resolution certifying the county assessor the property tax levies for collection in 2019. Any further comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. If there is no other motions, anybody's interested in making, I'm going to close the hearing. Hearing none, the hearing is closed, and those are adopted. That brings us to the end of our, of our agenda. Can I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I second.
Hearing no objection, it's moved and seconded, we are adjourned. Thank you.